Let's begin the work session of the Town of Garner Council on June 25th, 2024. We have a wonderful evening here this morning and a very light crowd here live. We must have a huge, huge audience out there remotely. I'm sure that's what it is. I've always led to see one of our favorite citizens have to recognize Rex over here. He's a loyal attendant. We have some other special guests soon to speak. It's a very exciting agenda. It's a work session where we have some fantastic topics coming up. Everything from some committee appointments on some of our key committees to the Affordable Housing Task Force is hot news. Not just give a spoiler, but just get you to stick around and listen to this stuff. The Cost of Services Report, a key factor that we use to make decisions. And we're going to talk about the Council Code of Conduct. Are we supposed to have good conduct here?
Yes, sir.
We've been going through classes to see if we can pass. And news on the White House Roundabout. So a lot of great stuff. That being said, I will call the meeting to order and I will ask our deputy town clerk, Ms. Rebecca Murray, to call the roll.
Mayor Gupta.
Here.
Mayor Protem Vance.
Here.
Councilmember Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Thank you. And that brings us to the adoption of the agenda for this evening. I think all the council members have had a chance to take a look at it, kind of work through it a little bit. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Matthews and second by Mr. Vance. And all in favor of passing this motion and accepting the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, it passes unanimously and we can hear it well over our new speaker system here, too. Thank you all for speaking up and using your good microphone technique. There are no scheduled presentations. We'll move right along to the discussions and as I promised you, we have some exciting ones. We're going to start with Ms. Terry Jones, our town attorney, to talk about council appointments to the various committees that we have and kind of get us up to date on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been working with the town clerk to make sure that we have properly appointed all of the individuals who will be beginning either their first term or a second or third term, beginning on July 1st, 2024, sorry. So basically, in reviewing the minutes, we just wanted to confirm that all of the slate as nominated by the Human Resources Committee will be appointed. So I would ask that if council doesn't have any questions, to go ahead and make those appointments as indicated in your agenda packet.
Thank you. And did you want to give us a little more detail about the individuals or we just read them off of this about the various people who have been appointed?
I don't have all of that information.
The vast majority of the individuals we have here for consideration are reappointments, continuing their second term on the various boards and commissions. The new members that we have that were approved by the council are Ms. Mariah Bishop and also Ms. Joanne, is it Joan, Joanne, Joan? Joan Jackson with the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. Those are the only two most recent members of the various boards.
Excellent.
So did you put that in the form of a motion?
I did not have those an explanation, but I can. Okay.
That was the news. Thank you for reading that.
That was it.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yes, I asked for the news and got it. And now we'll ask for a motion to have the council officially appoint these individuals on the list to those spots. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Vance and second by Ms. Behringer. All in favor of approving these appointees to these boards, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, that passes unanimously. And I can't thank our volunteers enough. They go unrecognized, but they put in a lot of time, a lot of work making big decisions for your town. So thanks very much to all of our volunteer board members. Maybe we'll even have a volunteer recognition event later this summer here. There's some talk of that. We just can't do enough to thank you. The other exciting thing that we've been working on for a little while and we're about to learn more about is the Affordable Housing Task Force and housing resources. And our town manager, Ms. Jody Miller, will give us some details on that.
Yes. Good evening, mayors, members of council. I'm excited that we have this item on your work session agenda. If you recall, a part of your discussion during your February retreat was really around affordable housing, how to identify strategies, priorities, what information do we need to make informed decisions about affordable housing issues within the town? And one of the outcomes of council's discussion at the February retreat was to form a staff and citizen-led task force to study this work and to provide some recommendations and guidance to the council in terms of things we should be considering as a town and as a community as we look at our affordable housing needs, but also look at opportunities for some of the development decisions before council. And so what you have before you this evening is the first step in creating the task force. We have recommended a slate of members of this task force, all of which have been contacted and are willing to serve if they are appointed to this work. Mayor Protem Vance has agreed to chair, be the chair of the task force with the goal of completing its work and primary discussions and work by the end of the calendar year to provide some feedback and recommendations to the council moving forward. So tonight, we're asking council to take the official action of appointing these task force members so that we can begin our work later on in July and August. In addition to that, part of some of the preliminary work from a staff standpoint that we've been working on is that we realized we get a lot of questions about housing and affordable housing issues within town, and we really didn't have one place to really point people in direction of where they can find out more information about resources. And so we have been working with our staff here at the town to create some web pages that will be housed on the town's website that really speak to housing opportunities and resources for all town residents, whether you're looking for affordable housing, you just want information on property maintenance, if you're looking for information regarding assessments or retail, having one place where everyone can go look for information on housing. And I have asked Assistant Manager Hodges to sort of walk us through that demo as part of looking at the resources that are out there in our draft pages. It is still a work in progress and we have a few, a little fine tuning to do on the pages, but we wanted to demonstrate that for you. So while Mr. Hodges comes up and brings up the web pages, it would be the recommendation of staff to go ahead and make the appointments to the task force as presented.
Yes. And would you mind reading those names for the folks at home that might not have picked them?
Certainly. Let me pull it down on my agenda. Great. So as I mentioned, Mr. Vance has agreed to be our chairperson. I will be serving on the task force as well as staff support, as well as Mr. Hodges. Councilmember Dellinger has also graciously agreed to serve on the task force. We have Ralph Carson with the Planning Commission who will be on the task force. Aaron Joseph, who's our Assistant Planning Director, will also be on the task force. Jeff Swain, who's a Garner resident and also a representative of the GEDC Board, will be part of the task force. Katie DiCarnevas, a resident of Garner, who's very interested in this issue, has agreed to be on the task force. Also Reverend Dr. Jeffrey Robinson, pastor of Juniper Level Missionary Baptist Church, has indicated interest and agreement to serve. And then Tina Johnson, formerly on the Garner Senior Center Advisory Board. So those are the presented individuals for the task force.
Thank you very much. It's a great lineup there. We had a number of people step up and express interest. We had a lot of great nominees and we're going to have another whole list of people who have spoken up to help and they probably will be called as resources or possibly some subcommittee participant later on. So a lot of folks involved in this and a very, very realistic and practical timeline. It's already been worked out by some of the members on the task force that we'll hear more about later. And that being said, I'm going to ask that we go ahead and make, and consider a motion to appoint these folks to the task force and then we'll come back to the resources report, if I may. So is there a motion to approve these appointments to the Affordable Housing Task Force?
So moved.
Mr. Matthews makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Behringer seconds. Let's call for a vote on this. All council members in favor of approving these appointments to the Affordable Housing Task Force, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. This is a great start to a very important project. And Mr. Hodges, you're going to tell us a little about an additional resource that staff has developed for people related to housing.
Yes, sir. Thank you, mayor and members of council. As Ms. Miller said in some discussions with council members, there was a desire to aggregate existing information that we had about housing, but it may have been spread around our website and places that may not have been intuitive to the citizens that were looking for it, but also bring in some additional information. And so when we started this task, we realized there was quite a number of things that we could consider, including here, and quite a number of ways that we could group that information together. So our, we've worked on a draft, as Ms. Miller said, there's some tweaks that we know we'd like to make to this in the future, but we've worked with some of those resource organizations that the mayor mentioned that are on our resources list to try to help us vet this, to try to help us think about groupings because they're some of the service providers for some of these services. And they've also made some suggestions to us about name changes and some of the things that we may consider tweaking on this. So when you come to the housing page, which is not live today, but it'll be live very shortly after we add tonight's appointees to the task force, and we'll send a link to you when that's done. There are three main places on our landing page, one called homeowner resources, one called housing services, and one currently called affordable housing, which is likely to change to a name that more closely represents the work of the task force and the town specifically. That was one piece of feedback we received from one of our partner agencies, that that label may be a little misleading for what's actually behind that tab. I'll speak more about that in a moment. So just to give you a brief overview under homeowner resources, when you go to this link, we've aggregated a number of resources for existing homeowners, things like tax administration, how you contact Wake County with questions about tax, how you contact the Register of Deeds, the IMAPs mapping application, Raleigh Water and Utilities. And you can see the list goes on here now. There's even a link with our public school system. In working with our, the assignment team from Wake County Public Schools recently, at a recommendation from a meeting that was had by our school board member and some of the council members, there was actually some information that they asked us to include about the assignment process. And so when you go to the public school system, you'll actually see a video about Wake County's assignment policies and things that they thought might be useful for homeowners to understand, especially if you're newer to the area. So each of these, you can click on the arrow and open the menu. We do have it defaulting to the tax administration page coming open because we think that's such a common resource that people may use. When you go below the homeowner resources, there's also some home repair and rehabilitation partner programs. So our partnership with Rebuilding Together is there, Resources for Seniors and the Northern Housing Finance Administration, all of these are organizations that we work closely with or have made referrals to. And then we also feature a video on our partner with Rebuilding Together, the Triangle. As you keep going down, there's then a grouping of financial assistance resources. So that is an overview of our homeowner resources. If we go to our second tab, our housing services page, many of these links go to a page or pages on Wake County's website because Wake County is our primary provider of services for housing-related services. But even in our assessment of their page, while it's good information, it may not always be clear where one should go. So we have, you may notice as you look at this, we have some links here that separate out, but they linked similar page or a same page for Wake County. We're trying to do that just to help people navigate that. So Wake County Housing Services, the Housing Authority, the Housing Finance Agency, some of these repeat from other pages because we're trying to have them available to wherever the particular user might be most likely to go or secondarily may be most likely to go. Then there's some additional links here. And then further at the bottom, we break it out a different way. I'm looking for housing resources for renters, new home buyers, and you see the list goes on there. So we've tried to present this information in several different ways, even though some of them may link to the same resource information. And lastly, the third subpage is the one that I mentioned was labeled affordable housing. This is likely to change to have some type of title to represent that it's the Town of Garner's initiatives and/or the task force. But when you come to this page, you'll see some branding for the Affordable Housing Task Force, a little statement about why it's important. The task force members appointed tonight will be loaded here shortly on this link. We'll also, as we continue to work on mission and values around affordable housing, we'll update that here and then goals as well. So there's placeholders for the work that we will be working with the task force to do. We also link here some resource information that we typically refer to or when we're making our decisions and information about housing. So you see a link to Wake County. You see one again to Rebuilding Together, to Resources for Seniors. These were linked in other pages, as I mentioned, but trying to put them where we think people may have other reasons for viewing this page that might not have viewed the previous two pages. We also are including the infographic on the right that we produce and update annually or biannually with Central Pines Regional Council of Government. You're familiar with that and have seen it before. And then the most recent Wake County Housing Affordability and Community Revitalization Housing Report. So just a repository there for some of those. And then we currently have a spotlight video on our Tron Station project because that's one project that council has chosen to make an investment in through financing for that project. So there's a short video clip just about that. This is a place that we can feature different projects and initiatives that the town may be closely involved with. So that is a brief overview of all of those pages. I'll be glad to go back and review any of that or answer any questions that you may have.
Council members, any questions, comments for John?
It's very nice.
Okay. Excellent. Excellent. Well, there's a huge amount of information out there, a huge number of resources, but there's still a lot of confusion about how can I really get some help? What should I be doing? What are my options? And this really starts to pull it together in one place for us. And I think it's a great launchpad for our task force to figure out how do we match up the available resources with the people who need this resource and everything in between. So my hat's off to you and all the folks who have worked on this. This is extremely important and meaningful work. Thank you very much, John.
You're welcome.
And no action needed on that one. And we'll move around to, we'll move along to item number three on the agenda that is the Cost of Services Report. And while that may sound a little microscopic or administrative or detailed, let me tell you how important this is. This helps us plan so that we don't have to raise our property taxes continually. And that should get the attention of every resident, every citizen. The one concern we do here is why are my taxes going up? And there's a balance between growth, managed growth, desirable growth, and projects and houses and buildings and businesses that pay their own way. And that's one of the elements that we have. We're very fortunate to be able, to be working with Matt Nunkester of City Explained in court. He's the president and founding principal. He works with towns and cities across the country, addressing these same issues, figuring out how to really analyze what we do and what makes financial sense. You did a great job last year, Matt, and really appreciate the information you pulled together. That was quite the springboard, I think, as you came back and adjusted for revaluation, which was pretty significant and a significant increase in our staff salaries and positions. So a lot of adjustment to be made. And with that being said, I'll just toss the mic over to you and let you go to town.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I appreciate you having me back again to talk more about cost of services. I have a brief presentation for this evening. There is a written document as well that we can go through and refer back and forth to, but I'll go through this quickly. But I'm casual enough, as you remember, that if you have a question, please just stop me within the presentation while the slide is up. So I start here by just looking at sort of the lineage of this focus for the town, going back to 2011 with the original break even analysis. Then we did a check in at 2023 and a check in now at 2024. And as you know, revenues and expenditures for a town are fluid and they change. And so these are three snapshots in time. However, things are always moving around, so we always got to have our head up and our eyes open in terms of how things are changing. And this provides us one implementation tool to do that. So what has changed in just a year's time? Quite a bit. We changed budget documents and formats. So the previous study was based off of what's called the CAFR report. It's basically an annual financial report looking backwards at the expenditures that occurred in fiscal year 21, 22. Because of the changes in pay and other resources and things you've given to your employees, we are looking forward now because we want to capture that phenomenon. So that's your fiscal year 24, 25 budget has those numbers in it. That's why we looked at that document. Now that not only changed the numbers, but the format. If you are keeping track, there's probably about seven more expenditure tables and one more revenue table in the new summary document. And that's just because we want to have a parallel one-to-one to the budget document that's the source. So the way we broke up numbers and things has changed slightly, but it's really to match the budget document that's the source. The Wake County reevaluation, as was mentioned, 2024, we've got a lot of great data that's come out of there. There are a couple more pieces that we're waiting on that we think will come out very soon, but we have that information. We think it makes a better assessment. The other thing it does for us is, if you may recall from the previous study, because the reevaluation or the valuations at that point were as almost as old as they could be, right? Because we were waiting for the timeframe to be reevaluated. So we only looked at the top or last five years of growth when we were looking at average numbers and things for assessed value last time. Because everybody has been assessed within the town, we're now using the entire townwide data set, which gives us a larger sample size. So we're more excited about that and have that information ready. The taxable ratios between residential and non-residential, which is the start of our study, changed because the values have changed. So we have to look at that. Our police and fire response data have been updated for another year's worth of calls. The U.S. Census data, we've also moved it up as well. Just to head off a question, if it comes up, you'll notice our population is still lacking maybe what was in your budget document or some other documents you have. It's because whatever number I use, I have to also know how many occupied units there are of that and the person for household statistics. That's why I ground myself in the census data for that. But if we can find that information available in another way, we're happy to respond to that. And then really this focus on Garner-only statistics, findings and conclusions. We tried to be, I'll just say, overzealous in the last document and we started to report some Wake County stuff for side-by-side. It got me confused and maybe others confused as well. So I just want to acknowledge all the things that have been changing in just a year's time. But I also want to take a step back here and kind of set the table. Your strategic plan, the town's strategic plan, starts to talk about being financially responsible, economic development, very big picture things. And you may recall that in the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, that was a rewrite in 2023, there are a lot of good ideas in there that create more value and more production for you. And in fact, I would point to one of the guiding principles that's called long-term financial stability is really one of your best arrows in the quiver for to ask for some of these things. Your comprehensive plan is a document that's state mandated, it has legal standing, and it also provides you information, big picture, to make some asks and requests of development applications that come before you. The cost of service study is an interim deliverable within that process, and I would argue that it's an implementation step. It's putting meat on the bones, it's putting some numbers out there so it can be more precise and more accurate. But really, the comprehensive plan is what's enabling you to ask for some of these things as you go forward. If you go to the guiding principle, it talks about financial responsibility, increasing local tax revenues, maintaining and improving the residential, non-residential ratios, and looking at design and how it creates value capture. This study that we're presenting and discussing today is just enumerating those things. And you'll notice in the back of the document, we're advocating for those things that are in your comprehensive plan right now. So use both documents simultaneously if you're evaluating an application. The other thing I just want to put out there is, at least in my mind, I consider this sort of a proof of concept phase of where you're at right now as a town and thinking about financial implications and expenditures and revenues and break even points. And the reason I say this is because we're really kind of building an airplane while we're flying it in some ways. We are bringing things to you. We have these points in time, 2011, 2023, 2024, and we say, is this getting us the information we need to make a good decision? And sometimes we go forward and sometimes we take a step back and say, let's package the data differently. You'll notice that as we go through this process, we have not just the report that we have today for you, but how can we package and report data? You may or may not recall, but I'm going to give you an update on a sketch tool that we've actually created that goes with the document. So you have that as well, those value capture ideas. And if there's anything else you need to think about in terms of, to make a good decision when an application comes before you, this is that proof of concept. Again, sometimes we take two steps forward and then take a step back because we want to repackage things or make it most impactful for you as you make your business at the dais. So kind of grace and patience as we go through this together and we test ideas and decide we want to repackage them or do things differently. That's what we're doing right now. So for that reason, I just say proceed with a little bit of caution if you want to quote numbers even from this report per se. Now, I don't think they'll drastically change, but I will give you an example. Wake County traditionally reports a breakdown of the Town of Garner's tax values. Right now, for the reevaluation period, they have reported it for sort of land and buildings, but it's lacking on the equipment and machinery for non-residential as well as personal property for residential. We've been told we think it's a July-August release of that information. So even here, these numbers may get tweaked a little bit as we can leave an assumption from tax year 23 and get into real raw data for fiscal year, for 24 reevaluation. For that reason, you will notice the draft stamp will stay on this document for quite some time. This is not even a final presentation for you. It's a briefing. It's an update. And I would hope that we would have chunked up over time, more conversations as we kind of learn about the data, get feedback on it, update the things and refine it as you go through the process. The other thing right now is just to acknowledge when we do the math, the report is set up to solve for X, in this case with X being the ad valorem property tax total assessed value break even point. So what number has to be in the tax record in order to generate the taxes that we need? This is not the sales number, but it's what is recorded so we can collect taxes off of it. But there are a lot of other things that go into it and other revenues and things that we'll talk about as we try to pinpoint exactly the causational factors for certain outcomes that we're seeing. So to that end, just a couple of comparative statistics, just to kind of keep track as we're going through the different versions of the study. All the way back in 2011, about 60% of the tax value was assumed to be residential. Point of clarification, just so everyone's on the same page. In Wake County, they tax apartments as commercial property. That's a good thing for you. But as we're doing a study like this and trying to look at the burden of those customers, the residential customers, we slide them over into the residential category. So when you see that, you start to see numbers in the residential side that might seem higher at 60% here than what you might be used to of more of a 50-50 or 45-55 kind of a split. What I'm noticing and what I want to show you here is as you go through the different time periods, the percentage of residential is increasing. In some ways, that's a good thing, right? It means that the products that are coming in are improving the overall value. But it also means that as you look at those initiatives, whether strategic plan, comprehensive plan or the like, sometimes it's good to just get some old-fashioned, non-residential growth to keep coming in because it really helps your tax base balance, as well as the mixing of uses to increase the tax production of the same land. of the same land for residential and nonresidential. So, but as you look at these numbers and try to compare them across, sometimes it's a function of the fact that you have more residential as a percentage as we go through time. The other question I get is, I think there are 13, if I'm not mistaken, different expenditure categories that we have. You'll notice that for a lot of them, they are the same. It doesn't matter if you're single family or multifamily. It's just a per unit cost. Things like town council's budget line item or some other things like that are just per unit regardless of type. But really, these are the five things that are driving the difference on the expenditure side between a single family unit and a multifamily unit. And what you see are the bigger numbers are the percent that is actually residential allocated of the budget. But then I broke it down into single family and multifamily. And one thing, if you're shrewd and really look at the numbers, you'll notice that the single family is higher percentage wise in all cases. But what's really driving some of this is the denominator. So when you go to a per unit assessment, we have a lot more to put in the denominator of single family, almost 12,000 units compared to multifamily, almost 5,000 units. So it's not just the numerator, the expenditures that we're chasing. But then if we're going to report per unit, it's how many of those units we have. How evenly can we divide stuff out over a bigger base that will influence some of the outcomes as well? And then I also just wanted to mention, while we're solving for X, which is the ad valorem property tax value that we're chasing, we also have to recognize that there are a lot of other levers that are being pulled to bring your revenues in and how drastically they have changed. And to pat yourselves on the back, you know, your sales tax revenue is going through the roof compared to where you were in 2011. Different intergovernmental revenues, whether it's utilities or cable franchise fees or APC sales or those kind of things go up. And your permitting and fees, and I chose to only focus on planning and inspections have gone up tremendously within about a 12 or 13 year period. So there's a lot of different revenues going on. And if these revenues go up, it might help you keep some of your property taxes down as you look at through the different years. So there's a lot of things swirling around to get to your break even point. So some general takeaways from the document as you go through it. Number one is the break even for a single family dwelling unit. Now here detached and attached are grouped together. It's a byproduct of the way the data is collected, both at Wake County Census data and the like. They kind of mash those together. So right now, a single family detached home and a town home are in the same category, just so you're aware. So if you look at the total expenditures that we had, we were about $2,700 per year. Now, these are annual reoccurring costs. And the offsetting revenues, nonproperty tax were about 1,200. So you can see we're about half of a gap in terms of what we would need the taxes to cover for it. So when you do the math and you see if you take a home that has a total assessed value, I'm not talking about the sales value, but the assessed value at $266,000 and you go through the simple math of how they do tax generation, you divide it by 100, the .52 is your tax rate right now. The .994 is the fact that not everybody pays their taxes every year. So there's a little bit of a lag of compliance. So .06%, which isn't bad, don't pay their taxes on time. You tend to get to the value of the 1375, which is our gap. So the takeaway from this slide is that 266, 192 is the break even point for a single family attached or detached unit in Garner. So how does that compare over time, right? So in 2011, it was at 174. Ironically, in 2023, when you just focused on Garner, not the Wake County reference that we were making, but just Garner, you were pretty darn close to that. But when you looked at your budget increases that you've been doing, whether it's the paying resources for employees or other things you've been doing, that has driven the number up, the break even point, and driven it up significantly to 266. Okay, so then how are the homes, like what does your sample look like in terms of being able to pay and cover that burden? So these are just some numbers we were able to pull. They're from June 10th of 2024 from the Wake County Tax Assessor. They published their information in a parcel file. We're able to slice and dice it up in order to report these numbers to you. The average total assessed value was $376,692. Again, assessed value, not the sale value. And it had a range. So the lowest we could find was at 68,400. The highest we could find was over $2.2 million. And those are, that can just be one record. It doesn't mean that the next record is close to that. Or that's your minimum max. You can see the median, because of some of your averages, comes down a little bit at 353. But either your median or your average are above your break even at 266. And you can see a quote from the report, 86% of the single family homes that were found within town limits using that parcel data were found to be above the break even number at this point in time. Again, snapshot in time. If anybody is curious, sort of a standard practice is if you take the total assessed value that you see there and multiply it by 20% positives, so 1.2, that tends to approximate what the market value might be or the sales value might be. Again, averages. So on the multifamily side, and specifically, we're talking about apartments for you, but it could be condominiums in the future based on how those units make it into your planning area. They're using the same math and methodology. The break even point is now $206,784. And as part of that, we then went back to the data, the parcel level data from the Wake County Tax Assessor, and we found some interesting things in here and things worth talking about. One is if you just take the average assessed value of all units, all multifamily units within Garner town limits, you're at 186, 898, which is below the break even point. And if you remember from our prior reports, we stopped there. But I said, based on the feedback we're getting, let's get more in depth with some of the data that we're finding. And so when you do that, you see the range. The lowest unit is valued at $92,000 and change. The highest value is at 266,000 and change. The median value also comes in below the break even point at 162 versus the 206. But when you go and you actually look, about 34%, and this is a direct quote from the report, about 34% of your apartments right now are reported above the break even line. And so for me, what that does is a next step for me, staff, whoever we want to challenge ourselves with is why? Let's go back and look at those. And I even in the report named them for us so we can go drive them. We can go research them. We can go get to know them better. What's causing those things? And it might even be things we don't understand. And so one of the things we've talked about as staff and consultant is, do we ask, once they're done with the valuation process, do we ask somebody from Wake County to come speak to us and say, of these seven properties, kind of what goes into assessing those? Like, is it geography? Is it density? Is it like, what's really driving your assessment of those? So we can understand because they have the power of assigning the value. So we now have a sample set that we can ask them questions about as well. So again, more homework to be done. If you start to look across the horizon periods that we have here, again, you can see we've gone up significantly in terms of our break even point on the multifamily. Part of that is because of the numerator, which is, you know, the increased budget items that you have. But again, it doesn't have as big of a denominator either. So the burden per home is higher and gets higher because there's less of it to spread around. All right, so then in terms of the profile, this was just to prove how many numbers I can fit on the slide. I'm not going to go through them all to you. But this was in the report. And if you want to go through kind of line by line, these are the categories that the Wake County Tax Assessor uses. Everything on the left, the first four columns on the left, the total value in dollars, land area, total units and total heated square feet come directly from their data set. The last four columns to the right are calculations. So if you want to look at value per acre, value per unit, value per thousand square feet, and even the density, that was the average density that we could find for those areas, it's all on this table. The takeaway, though, is if you have kind of four leading land uses that seem to be good tax producers for you. No surprise, again, we've talked about it before. Apartments are a great tax generator on a per acre value when you're looking at the land. Industrial and commercial are doing awfully well for you. But again, even the single family homes are in less than a 10 acre site, which is the way they catalog, single family detached, are also doing quite well compared to all the others. So it's kind of your package are those four that have been your most productive value per acre. When you, again, pull it in per unit, you see that you're at 376, 692 is the average assessed value for single family detached or attached. And 186, 898 is your average total assessed for apartments, multifamily. And then this is where, as we test tools and ideas, we can start to think of things like density. If you look at this, if my math is right, the single family homes are about twice as productive on a per unit basis, right? So if I round to 380 and 190. So then it becomes a question of density. How many units are you putting on that land in order to see how productive it is and to be able to compare the two? So again, density becomes very important as part of this. So some early recommendations that we have right now. These are in the report and again, really tie back to the comprehensive plan and other initiatives you have going on as well. But any opportunity to increase the value of the same piece of property should be considered, whether that's through amenities, through density, through design, through land use mix. But anything you can do to increase the value of the same piece of land would be to your benefit in this context. Development intensities tend to increase the capacity and tax generation potential of a site. And you can see we did a case study of the North Hills area. And if you were back in 2022, the area in green might have been worth like 6.9 million, I'm sorry, $225,000 per acre, which is when it was kind of a strip suburban auto mall. And it goes all the way up to $7.5 million once you start putting towers and a lot of density and things in there. So there is kind of proof in the pudding of how these principles play out from a tax perspective. Then the other thing is how you keep properties active. And so as these properties remain active, they remain valuable. If they can have a sale that goes on and it changes hands, you know, in theory, the reassessment has kind of occurred at the bill of sale in case the value goes way up. And then design and character considerations, we talked about that as well. Again, just trying to make the most productive use of a piece of land and going back to the long-term financial stability guiding principle within the comprehensive plan. So that's everything about the static document. I do just want to preview for you kind of this beta version or in development sketch tool that we had been creating. And it's dynamic and live, and so you can do different things with it. I actually have it here if you want to look at it as well. But in a static environment, what you see here is where it says development program. You can type in different land uses and everything after an intensity, you put in how many units you have. Everything after that, units and group are pull down menus. And as you choose something different from the pull down menu, everything underneath it updates. After that, you would have an actual comparable development to what you have today and what is proposed. Just eyes wide open, this is the most dangerous part of the spreadsheet because it's an argument about which one do you choose, right? This is the art part versus the science. And so this is what you'd have to really look at. And then underneath it, it has all the different expenditures and things that would be associated with it, revenue and expenditures. And it gives you kind of an out the door, whether it's a positive or negative outcome. There are other tabs within this sheet, just so you're aware of what's going on. We have a supplemental tab that actually calculates how many more residents, employees or students might be generated on this site because of the development program existing and proposed. And then we also have some impact generators in it as well for, okay, if currently we have 2.4 police officers per thousand residents and we add more residents, how many more police officers are we creating demand for? Same things for parks and greenways and water and sewer and the like. And this just kind of helps you during budget season because as you're approving these things, you'd almost have like a scratch sheet of cumulative impacts that are coming. So then it's not a surprise when you want to budget another police officer or something like that, and you know why. It's because of what's been going on. So all of those things are there and are available. Right now, it's done one way where it's looking at value per acre. Other communities we work in, they say, no, let's just come up with the price point of the home and we create the spreadsheet off of the price point of a home. That's why I'm telling you this whole proof of concept thing is I'm not here to tell you we're done. And I'm not telling you need more or less information. It's really just what you feel you need to have the context to make your decisions at the dais and how far you want to go down this path. So in terms of next steps, I might even defer back to staff here because I'm the hired help in terms of how they want to take it forward. But I wanted to give them a chance to talk about the next steps moving forward.
Great. Thank you, Matt. And before we open it up for questions and comments by council, I just want to, and at your seat at the dais, I provided a copy of the memo that was provided to council back in April that talks about the larger context of this work that we're doing in terms of not only updating the cost of services study, but also creating that development impact model and a timeline for doing that work. And so just briefly going over the timeline again, you'll see the work and the presentation that we have before us today really speaks to that third item of updating the cost of services study and providing information about the operations and maintenance tool as Mr. Nunkaster just did. But that, our work doesn't stop here. As you heard, Mr. Nunkaster mentioned, there's some updating and finalizing of the report based on some data that we will receive later on this summer. But there's also work to do with council to talk about goals and expectation for using this information and what the hopes and expectations are with developing the development impact model as well and developing a framework to do that work and what decision points we need to make in order to move forward with that. There's also opportunity for continued council discussion and feedback as we continue to do this work into the fall. We've identified presenting a draft framework for council's feedback and consideration at your September work session. And then as Mr. Nunkaster mentioned, part of this work is about testing and calibrating and validating and reviewing and having a legal review of the model to really make sure we are following the law and make sure that information that we are using, we can use it appropriately and within the limits of the law. And so there's time for that to happen as part of the ongoing work in the fall as well with our final concurrence and an action for approval scheduled for the November work session. So as you can see, based on our timeline and next steps, although we have done a lot to this point, we still have more to do to really make this cost of services study tool helpful and informative for council, but also look at developing that development impact model that speaks to how we understand and make informed decisions about future development opportunities within the town. So that being said, I will turn it back over to you, Mayor, for council consideration and questions and ongoing conversation.
Excellent. Thank you so much for those comments. Jody, that really helped clear it in perspective. And Matt, you've got all the data we can ever use. If we can just figure out how to use it wisely and effectively. I just want to emphasize how much work has been done on this already. But this is only the first draft that we're seeing. We've got several months ahead of us to refine this, to understand this, to make some of the key decisions that Matt mentioned. What indicators are we going to use? How are we going to use them? How do we take this wealth of knowledge to make better decisions about how Garner grows and stays financially sustainable in the long term? So it's great work. This is just the first step. We don't have any action to take this evening. We don't have any decision to make. Most of the council members have spent a good bit of time with staff and with Matt going through this. And there'll be plenty more time going forward. So you don't have to make a decision tonight, but we will certainly open the floor for any more questions for Matt while he's here. And we'll start then, Mr. Vance is in this time. See if you have any questions or comments.
I have no questions, just comments. So thank you for the information. And also with the briefing that we had was helped clarify a number of questions that I had. And I realized that we still have a lot of work to do in relative to this particular project we're on here with the cost of studies and other items, but really have no specific questions. They were answered with our previous meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Dallinger.
I haven't had a chance to meet with Matt yet. I do have questions, but I want to make sure council who's had a chance to go ahead and speak before I say anything because I don't want to repeat anything they say.
Okay, so you have plenty of time to dig into the details and we'll have plenty of work sessions ahead of us. Anything else?
I'll go after everyone else. I haven't had with him yet. I think everybody else has had a chance to meet, so I'll comment after.
Ms. Derringer.
I have no questions. I just appreciate your hard work and your explanation of the time you put into it. I know it's a big job and you've made it understandable and appreciate that.
Okay, Mr. Stinkler.
Yes, as part of the Zoom call yesterday, we had a chance to ask questions. I think one of the more interesting bits of information in here is that, Matt, they studied 33 multifamily developments and only seven were above the break even line. And in the seven, two of them are rather old complexes, which is very interesting. Plus, three of the seven that passed Plus, three of the seven that passed are just above the line. One of the, the oldest one is the highest rank Georgetown Manor, which is very interesting. But the concern is despite being per square foot, the highest per square foot tax base in Wake County, which is multifamily, is that density is creating the call for services, which is putting a strain. And we're not talking about bad stuff, it's just a strain because of density, because you got four, five, six hundred units of a small place where you can only have thirty or forty houses in a neighborhood. And that strain is, will continue. It's not, you're not, we're not going to magically break it. I think that's very important, that what's, what is putting a stress on us. Also, I'm going to ask, we talked yesterday about the break-even point, houses two sixty-six, and that ten thousand, the eleven thousand units were above that. But the question I want to see is how far above? Five percent, ten percent, twenty percent? I mean, if it's, if, you know, a third of them are just ten percent above it, then that's very close because the numbers are changing constantly.
That's right.
And so that's a concern. One, something else I mentioned yesterday that was a concern, this is me doing math and looking at what our budget is now and what our budget was back in 2011, when the first one was done, is the budget has doubled. The cost of the department, least Fire, Public Works, Parks and Rec, they doubled in call or some have increased far more than that, but the total impact it doubled. So in my mind, if the cost of services for the house was one seventy-four in 2011, then it should have doubled now for the cost of services because of the people who are providing the services, the budget has increased. I know they're doing other things, but the impact is that continues to grow. So that was a concern I had is me trying to understand why the budget's doubled and the number hasn't doubled. Because the, what we are paying for those departments which had the biggest impact, I mean, one is solid waste. Solid waste is going to happen, it's a fact, it's going to be so much for a house, that's just the way it is. And that's part of it. At the end, Matt, they've done, it's a lot of good work here, just, this is almost something that we need to do, it never needs to stop. I mean, it's constant. Get matter retained, we'll give them a part-time job up here if it be so often. But it really is, there's so much to do because the numbers are constantly fluctuating. Now, we all know that the assesses aren't going to change between now and the next assessment in 2028. They're fixed, but we have some coming online that's been approved, and they'll be fixed at whatever, they are on that time and point, but it stays that way until the next assessment. So anyway, I appreciate what you provided. And again, we'll follow up. I just, I see more breakdown, as I said, with the houses of the ten thousand above the line, what the percentage is above the line. I think that's important because we, as we talked, we got some older housing stock where it's taken forever to probably get above that break-even line. And we've got a lot of new housing stock, and I've ridden around town, I got a lot of information, and a lot of the new single-family detached is way above the two sixty-six. So it'll be interesting again to see the breakdown and the numbers on that. But I'll stop for now.
Okay. Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. A great presentation and appreciate the preview and the numbers and the questions you answered for us. And I agree with Gray, it's just, these numbers and yourself, it's going to be a constant move and target. And it's, it'll always, I guess, be a work in progress trying to keep it as current as we can. And with things going on in the world, so many things can impact or change it one way or the other. So, but this is fabulous data, it was good to understand that number and how we got there and has the breakdown, really good, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, great. As I say, we don't have to make any decisions tonight. Matt will continue to be available to us as we refine and double-check these things to make sure we're moving in the right direction. And at the same time, let's get, let's squeeze all the good out of it that we can while we're here. Mr. Dallinger, you have a question?
Yeah, just some questions and comments, and we can go into more detail when we speak. I think you've said on your proceed with caution, but you've also put some firm numbers in front of us. And I think that's dangerous because it anchors us a little bit as we evolve what this tool is and what it means, because I don't really think I've seen a clear definition of what break-even is. So we haven't really defined what break-even means and how we get there. And I bring that up because the model is based on an assumption that the budget we've adopted is adequately meeting the needs of the town. Yet we are, we know that a lot of departments and services are, been underfunded or under-invested over a period of years, whether it's street maintenance, stormwater, infrastructure, transportation. So these are sort of hidden costs that extend beyond the actual budget. The budget doesn't meet all the needs of the town every year. That's kind of my point. And so we've got to nail that down a little bit better. I think the input tool is a good goal point to get to and really come into something that guides our land use decisions. But I think we're, the way the data is presented, there's a lot of that's done, revenue per dwelling unit and revenue per square foot, that you've got to find a way to translate that into revenue per and expenditures per acre. So there's a big gap there. And the reason I make that point is a lot of the assessment is done on the non-residential side is talking about square footage for the commercial. Well, we have a lot of old antiquated, outside of our industrial flex.
Pieces.
We have a lot of old antiquated types of commercial with twenty acres of parking lot. It's not a very efficient use of acreage. If you look at the North Hills as an example, there's about this much surface level parking. And so that, one of the things that jumped out at me in the data was that sort of gap on the commercial side. And it looks like, oh, maybe commercial isn't that great of an investment. That would be the assumption you could come to out of looking at that is it's not generating, might as well do single-family homes based on what those numbers come back as. So I think there's, filling, changing that gap to revenue per acre and making sure it's a land use tool and providing those, in that calculation, what are we getting out of this land use? So, and maximizing that. And it's a lot, it's a big translation to go from what you have right now to that when you're focused on dwelling units. The other is, it kind of goes back to what I was saying about the under, lack of investment in certain areas is without having the capital model built in on top of it as another layer, it's masking the growth needs of the town from town staffing and facilities and street maintenance. I mean, we're underfunded on street maintenance, we always have been, right? I talked about this afternoon. Will we ever catch up? No. But if we keep at the same level, is it going to get worse? Is it going to get better? Is it going to stay the same? So there's a whole world of debt costs and future debt service and infrastructure because we're under-invested in transportation. We don't really, we did bonds for streets, but we've got massive infrastructure improvements that we need to do, most of them in partnership with DOT or some other partner. We don't have that pot of money sitting there that we've set aside to invest in those infrastructure and road improvements. So I think that two sixty-six number, it scares me for one that it's public because if I'm an applicant coming before us, I'm going to say, oh, oh, in your draft, you're at two sixty-six, we're going to do four hundred dollar, four hundred thousand dollar, we're going to be gangbusters for you financially. So I think we, this we need to take with less than a grain of salt for public use. It's a starting point. And then just some of the teasing out some of the unit-based growth metrics like street, linear street, maintenance and all that, and then resident-driven factors, whether it be police or park capacity and probably the biggest one is road capacity. And then the other point on density, and this is not just for this, we've got, not all density is created equal on the residential side. And so we have to really define it and understand it. We've had, even in the past, our last meeting, and telling an applicant, you need to go more vertical, they're like, oh, well, we'd have to increase density to do that. It's like, no, 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 you only got four hundred units, you're just going to go higher. And so they're clearly understanding what density means and how that, we can structure that, because I think it's kind of understood if the more vertical you go, you have the same density, but you can accomplish a lot of other goals in reduction of infrastructure, a reduction in increasing open space and all these other things. So that density conversation is one we really need to lean into. So like I say, it's a, it's a good start, but there are a lot of proceed with caution areas that we can get into. So yeah, that, those are sort of a lot of my initial thoughts is defining break-even and really drilling down on what the optimal level of service delivery is and how far behind are we in having to catch up? So that, those are sort of my general two, two, two-pass reading comments.
No, that's, that's great. And, you know, as I mentioned, I look forward to speaking with you more about it. Just a couple of thoughts so everyone has it for context. The impetus for the twenty-three and twenty-four updates were to be able to compare back to 2011. So a lot of the methodology decisions were made so we could compare apples to apples. But that can evolve. Communities I work in do everything a little differently. It's got to be right-sized, you know, whether you want to do it value per acre, value per unit, I mean, all of that stuff is to be determined, right? I mean, it all can be right-sized. The only other thing I'd say is, is even, you know, as my proceed with caution, you know, I, that was almost one of the first things I put on the slide, just because I wanted to make sure everybody was aware. As soon as you put it in a printed document, it's almost old. So the thing I would just tell you is the tables are actually probably more valuable to you than the report. Because the tables, if you want to play what-if, you can do that, whether it's a shortfall of funding or whatever scenario you want to create. But to keep it live and up to date, I think, you know, you can either keep updating this report or just have the spreadsheet going and have a summary memo that comes out to you, you know, every so often or whatever you need. But I actually think the tables will be more important for you than the written report in the end.
So there's a question on that too about referencing the 2011 and comparing. I think it makes more sense to make a tool that works for us going forward than to be anchored to maybe a methodology that worked then, but may not work for the future. So we just, we can talk about like, what are some of the guardrails? Because I think one other thing too, when talking about defining break-even analysis, the assumptions need to be very clear on their own page almost with bullet points so that it's very clear what, what are the assumptions, what are the assumptions we're making about growth and those sort of things? They're in there, they're just kind of in the, getting lost in the text a little bit.
Fantastic, great questions and great points there, Damian. I agree with you, there's not going to be one single shot tool to use on this. Matt has said repeatedly, don't focus on the dollar amount, don't focus on the per-acre, per-person, per-home, per-apartment. He said, just go where you want to go. And we look back at our Garner Forward Plan, the fourteen guiding principles of where we want to be, not one of them says squeeze as many dollars of property tax out of these hundred acres as we possibly can. Don't, it's not, never does it say, your goal is to raise as much property tax as possible. That is not our mission. Our mission is to create a community where people can get along, live in different ways and different kinds of housing and have a good life and be able to walk to school, to play, to work, to your friends, and so on, interconnectivity, character, things that we enjoy. It's all back to the Garner Forward Plan. And as Matt has pointed out continuously, this is just one piece of fourteen major pieces, and we can't focus on it, but it's a great tool to help us understand what are, what the real cost of this stuff is. So it's very helpful. I look forward to working with you over the coming months as we refine, double-check and see how does this fit with a real goal of keeping Garner a great place to be, a great place to live? How does this help us reach that goal? So, so thank you, thank you very much.
One thing to follow up with what Damian said about commercial, you mentioned the big parking lots. You know, North South Station is an old development. It's over thirty years old, it started in the eighties. And when the Bus Rapid Transit Program with Raleigh begins, which is, that's supposed to be the second leg of it, that should be a major transformation in that area. That should also increase dramatically the value per square footage because of what'll probably go there. And what you have to also consider is what, the way to maximize, not ten acres of parking, you do ten acres of parking deck, and to save, and you maximize what you can put there. So that's one of the properties in Garner that's going to have to have a major renovation, update, change because the Bus Rapid Transit can change it, and you're going to access therefore not only for people to live, but to walk places. And so that's one of the, I think, first places we may see or should see a major update. And whenever they come in and, you know, the property owners know more about what's going on in talk of planning, then, you know, this is, that's when you really got to work with those people and kind of maximize the project, the project, projects that may come there. Because this can transform that area to look a whole lot different it does today than just being a big shopping center.
Yep.
Yeah. It's, 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 that should be a transformational project, just like whatever happens with the hospital in the District Key area, should be a transformational project. One's developed, it needs to be redeveloped, one hadn't developed yet, one's, you know, one was cornering in the tobacco fields, and it's going to be something substantially different than what it was. In the next few years, we should see some transformational projects.
I agree.
Hey, Matt, any closing comments from you, any last thoughts? It won't be, it's only last for tonight, not last for the week or last for the month or last for the project, just a closing comment for tonight.
Just instead of saying goodbye, I'll say see you later. We'll do it that way.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move ahead with the item number four on the agenda, and this also turned out to be more entertaining than I thought it would be, and that's talking about the council code of conduct. And I'll have to say too, that having been in this job for six months and haven't observed any other town councils in real life and on TV, we seem to be getting along very well with each other. We have a high degree of civility, and our citizens even better. They have been just wonderful and cooperative and positive as we've dealt with them. We just want to make sure that we continue to do everything possible, that all of the council members set a good example for the staff and the staff set a good example of communicating effectively and courteously with our citizens who in return will, will be cooperative and positive as they work with us. So it's, it's an ongoing job, and our town attorney has been kind of our leader on this of helping us think about it and move forward. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Terry Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few months ago, as the town was going through some transition with the manager, the mayor and town council asked the legal department to come up with a code of conduct. But I want to go back a few steps. So this code of conduct was to look at how council members interact amongst themselves, how they interact with staff, how they interact with the public, and provide a framework for how everyone will conduct the business of the town. But going back to, actually, 2009, the General Assembly decided that all counties and cities would have to adopt a code of ethics. So early, well, in 2010, Garner did adopt a code of ethics. It is similar to the code of ethics in many other jurisdictions. It appears to have been a template provided, and these were adopted, and it appeared to have gone into a drawer and wasn't, wasn't used. But I mean, as you look at this code of ethics, I mean, it really, I mean, for the most part is, are things that are required under state law for you to do, as well as just sort of some guidelines of how to conduct business. Maybe not providing all of the up-to-date kinds of scenarios that you now deal with, obviously, you know, dealing with remote meetings was something that maybe was, you know, a unique point in time. But what we've done, Erin Gibbs, our assistant town attorney, and I have done, and I give her credit for, she looked at a lot of different resources to try to distill what would be best practices for these interactions from, interactions for council with each other, council with the public, council with staff. So, I'm sorry, I'll go back to that. So in 2010, this was a, about five-page document, and it had seven different sections. And we can talk a little, we'll talk a little bit more in detail about those. And now, you know, we've drafted an eleven-page document. And now, you know, we've drafted an eleven-page document because as time goes on, there's lots more detail to be put into that. Bear with me a moment. I will get into the presentation. All right. So, building on that two thousand and ten resolution that adopted the code of ethics, we have drafted a code of conduct and ethics. And again, in two thousand and ten, late, it was late ten, two thousand and ten, that Resolution two thousand and eighty was adopted to address the five things that the legislature wanted you to address. The need to obey all applicable laws regarding your official actions, the need to uphold the integrity and independence of your office, your duties, and then to conduct the affairs of town council in an open and public manner. So, again, the, the first section of the original resolution talks about obeying the law. And so, we've just added in some references to those laws you have to abide by. One being the mandatory two hours of ethics training that each of you must take within twelve months of your election or appointment. And that's including every time you get reelected to your office. And then there are certain conflicts of interest laws that talk about not being able to benefit from public contracts, not misusing confidential information, not benefiting financially from your elected position. And then most recently, the Transparency Act looking at your associations with nonprofits and, and the funding that they might receive from the town. In discussing, you know, the proposed code of conduct with the mayor, he did suggest that perhaps in addition to the mandatory two hours of ethics training that you have to do, that town council members commit to attending some number of hours of training each year. Not necessarily on ethics, but on any manner of issues that may help you to carry out your official duties as mayor or council members. And then just recently, last week, five of six of the members of the town council were able to take the North Carolina League of Municipalities Commitment to Civility Training. So, this code of conduct, civility, ethics, these are issues that are being discussed in many jurisdictions around the state. And part of that is a result of the acrimonious, or the acrimony at the federal, yeah, and somewhat at the state level of government that are dividing citizens politically, philosophically. So, again, section two of the original resolution talks about upholding the integrity and independence of the office, participate, you know, in establishing and then also enforcing high standards of conduct, not only for yourselves, but for town staff. And also expecting that the public observe, you know, and act respectful when they are here conducting business, acting respectful to staff when they need to get services from the town. But it's important that, in most jurisdictions, that the town council itself sets the example for how, of behavior, for how the public and staff should, should act. Section three again is to avoid impropriety and the appearance of impropriety in all activities that you do as council members. But it also reminds you that even although you have your own private interests, you need to make sure that there, there's no conflicts with your responsibility to the public. Again, this is a code of conduct and ethics and, you know, you're reminded to use your best judgment. This, at eleven pages, at a hundred pages, it wouldn't cover every situation that you all encounter in carrying out your official duties. But reminding you about undue influence from family, friends, other people that you're, have associational relationships with. And then not to either advance your own private interest or others' private interest. And again, in compliance with the Public Records and Open Meetings Act to publicly disclose the nature and extent of any interest that may be a conflict of interest or may be an appearance that, that it would be a conflict of interest. In section four, this, this section goes in a little bit more of the day to day. How do you carry out your legislative responsibilities, your adjudicative responsibilities? And those are your quasi judicial proceedings such as the special use permits. Also, there could be some appeals from enforcement actions that you would hear as an adjudicative body. And then your administrative responsibilities. And we can go into these a little more in detail, but you are the legislative body of the town. So, you enact ordinances, adopt plans. These are to implement the policy, implement the best interest of the constituents that you serve. But you also, in doing your legislative activities, you have to respect the legitimacy of other members differing goals and policies. You all were elected for different reasons and represent some different constituencies. So, to be respectful of the fact that Garner is a diverse community and you have to implement or at least try to address all of the interests that come before you. In the adjudicative, I mean, this is probably the, the area where there's the, most of the guidelines in our state statutes, but talking about, you know, professional competence, order and decorum in the proceedings, being, you know, patient and courteous to those that come before you. And then making sure that everyone has the due process that they're entitled to and a right to be heard in those public hearings that you're required to have. And then also to, to dispose promptly of the business of the town. And I think the mayor, when you came in, you talked about efficient and effective meetings. This was something embodied in the resolution, you know, back, as far back as two thousand and ten. From, for administrative, this is probably a catchall category, but it talks about how are you going to act and how are you going to interact with the town managers and town staff? And we are in a town council manager form of government. So, in that, the, the town manager is the one to implement all your legislative policies and also to be in charge of the staff. But again, in, in the administrative realm, it's also to make sure that when you are using town equipment and resources and personnel, that you are using them for the public interest. And then, again, as the town council, which is the body governing the town, making sure that all of the town employees also follow the laws and, and these goals that you have. And for the most part, these are covered by the personnel policy and the police directives. And they are hundreds and hundreds of pages long telling what staff are required to comply with in performing their duties. But also in this section, you know, if you do observe the improper conduct of an employee, that you promptly let the town manager know that so that it can be addressed and it can avoid, you know, reflecting negatively on the town as a whole. Section five again is, is reminding you that you are subject to the Open Meetings Act and the public records laws and that, that you should be conducting business in the open transparently as much as possible. But there are situations where discretion and deliberations are necessary. There are times when closed sessions are appropriate. There are also times when you require information before you can make an informed decision in a public setting. Again, section six talks about conflicts of interest and making sure that you minimize issues that may create a conflict of interest in the work that you do. And that tends to be with respect to not only financial interest, but making sure that the town can function and that you're not, your personal activities don't interfere with the, with your official duties and the proper functioning of the town. Section seven is the one that addresses political activity and basically is reminding that both elected officials and candidates for office have to comply with a lot of campaign laws and disclosure requirements. But also, this section recognizes that it is appropriate as elected officials to join and participate in other civic organizations, including political organizations. Because that's part of, it's consistent with our constitution and the laws of the United States and North Carolina. So, it's, it's recognizing that while you are an elected official, you come from the community as a whole and are representing certain constituencies within that who affiliate in different types of organizations and entities. So, section eight is primarily the new part of this resolution. Again, largely based on research of materials that we could find from other jurisdictions. And so, but the basis is to basically treat each other, treat town staff, constituents, the publics, and any others that you come into contact with respect and civility. And again, as I mentioned, participation in the recent League of Municipalities Commit to Civility Training. They are asking, in addition to the training, that each of you will sign an individual pledge and then adopt a Commit to Civility Resolute, Resolution. And if you do that, Garner could be recognized with some other jurisdictions at the next city vision in two thousand and twenty-five. So, we try to group these in some of the, the different interactions that you might have. But in communicating with the public, you know, making the public feel welcome, not showing prejudice or disrespect, being fair and equitable in allocating public hearing time, listening intently, asking for clarification, but not necessarily debating the public or presenters, and not making personal attacks of any kind. And again, it's, it's not only the words that are being used, but the tone and the body language in which that is done. And that, that is in, in the council chambers or, or elsewhere where you're in public meetings. But also in unofficial settings and meetings, not making promises on behalf of the council because decisions are made by a majority vote. So, even though you have your own personal views, you know, no one council member can affect a particular decision. So, making sure that informally the public recognizes that. And then again, to not make personal comments about the other council members. It's fine to disagree, but it should be respectful. And one of your meeting rules or procedures does say that once a decision is made, the minority should respect the majority after a vote and not denigrate or, or disrespect that unless you want to go through the process of reconsidering that official decision. But again, out of the meeting rules, you know, we brought back in, the council member should avoid public acts or comments that impugn the town, the town staff's processes. And that Garner is a small community, so when you're out and about, people are listening, they have cell phones, they might be recording your interactions just to be cognizant of that fact. Moving into communications between individual council members. So, both, so when you're in meetings and work sessions, again, demonstrating professionalism and decorum in debate, waiting for recognition from the mayor before speaking and avoiding interrupting other speakers. This tends to send a message to the public that they're, they shouldn't be interrupting anyone, making comments from their seats. And again, you know, making sure that everything you do is in an open and, and public manner. It's transparent. There is a caution to avoid discussing public business before or after a meeting if a quorum is present. And then consulting with the town attorney regarding any matters that might be appropriate for closed sessions rather than in open forum. And then also again, in meetings and, and work sessions, being respectful to each other, demonstrating problem solving approaches. And this sets an example both for staff and the public. Also in conducting the business of the town, being punctual, or punctual, and also staying on topic and then allowing each member time to speak and debate. But again, once a vote has been taken, having the minority respect the majority decision as that is the action of the town. In private settings or in private conversations that you have with one another, again, remembering to be respectful. But also to treat all of your written notes, messages, emails, texts, and other communications with fellow council members as public records. Because whenever you are conducting public business, it is subject to the Public Records Act. And also being mindful that private conversations can be overheard and, and become public, whether they're, that's intentional or not intentional. In communications with staff, again, make sure you're treating town employees and staff as professionals and with dignity. I have heard from a number of staff, you know, over my twenty-five-year government career is that staff don't tend to be in it for the money, but they do like to be respected and, and to be, that is an important issue of whether they feel good about the job and the work they do. To have the support of the town council or the governing board is very important to staff. But it is important to recognize the council manager form of government and making sure that you're limiting interactions with certain town staff to the management level or when delegated to certain other employees. Again, under state law, the town manager manages the town employees in accordance with the personnel rules and regulations and subject to the general direction and control of the town council. So, the general direction and control means you, you make the overall policies, but don't, but individual decisions about discipline or other actions with respect to town staff is under the purview of the town manager. Also in communications with staff, comments about staff performance should only be made to the town manager and through confidential correspondence. That's because personnel records are not public records for the most part. And we owe, as the employer, the town owes a duty to maintain that confidentiality. And then also corollary to that is not to attempt to influence town staff when they're doing their work. And that includes, you know, granting permits, processing development, applications, awarding contracts, selecting consultants, all of the work they do. But also to consult with the town manager before you attend meetings with town staff. And then requests for additional staff support or resources should be made to the town manager. And I often get the question, isn't it okay for me to, to go to staff and ask for a question? Yes, it's absolutely okay to go to staff and ask a question. What becomes problematic is if staff doesn't have that information, have, have you now sent a message that they either are not performing their job adequately or there's something that you're directing them to do to gather more information? And those are the kinds of discussions that should go to the manager or the department head level. But yes, staff's there to provide resources to, and information to you, just like they provide that to the public. But as council members, many staff, you know, they respect your position and, you know, you scare them sometimes.
Sure, she looked at me when she said that.
I wasn't intending to. I'm trying to look at you.
She looked right at me, she said, you scare staff sometimes, she was looking right at me.
That's okay, I scare people too.
Yeah, you scare us.
All right, so, you know, something that's very, like, much bigger issue than it was in 2010 is social media. So we, and there have been a couple of Supreme Court cases that have come out lately, but in social media, you should maintain a clear delineation between any personal or campaign social media accounts you have and town-related social media accounts. You have not lost your First Amendment rights, so you have the right to speech, you have the right to association, so it's appropriate to have your own personal accounts, but we would advise to include a disclaimer on any personal pages because, you know, if you're Googled, everyone knows that you're an elected official right now, but to be clear that this is a personal page, you know, of you as the individual, and those are your views. And then the best practice is to direct members of the public to the official town websites for information about the town. However, if you conduct public business on your personal social media accounts, you, they will be subject to the North Carolina Public Records Act, and in some cases, in some of these Supreme Court cases, they may subject the town as a whole to liability. This includes, you know, blocking people commenting on that, deleting their messages, things like that, and we can certainly give you additional information about that. And then it's not to use social media in a way that uses the town's resources, facilities, for a personal advantage or an advantage of one of your constituents. And the Leo Department and the Communications Department are here to assist when you do want to get a message out. We do have official channels through all the different social media platforms, and Rick Mercer, as your communications director, is responsible for making sure that we do comply with these Supreme Court rulings, as well as retaining, because we do have a public records retention requirement, including for social media accounts. All right, and wrapping up soon, one of the things is a dispute resolution process. So a code of conduct and ethics is really a set of guidelines, but what happens if you feel that somebody has crossed that line? So again, under state law, you may have a closed session to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee. However, discussing qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, appointment or removal of a council member must take place in an open meeting. So there's an internal inconsistency in the state law about what can be in a closed session and what has to be in open, but I think that's a recognition as to the fact that you're elected, and if you're going to be censured or other official action being done, that should be done in an open session. So in, again, if, once you determine that you believe a violation of the code of conduct or ethics has occurred, you could motion for a censure resolution against that particular individual or individuals on council, but you have to provide notice and an opportunity to be, to be heard on that allegation before council. And again, as in the original resolution, consulting with the town attorney as to the applicability of this code to any particular situation is completely appropriate and welcomed at all times. So, and again, in the presentation, this is just, you can look at a lot of different codes of conduct and codes of ethics that, that were reviewed to come up with this draft for you. But tonight, this is just the first time to publicly present this to you. Certainly welcome any feedback you have on, you know, whether you like this, whether there's some area that has not been covered that you would like that addressed, but we have, you know, attempted to provide with you a, a starting point or a jump-off point for discussions on, on the code of conduct that, that you want to adopt and want to expect from your fellow council members. Happy to answer questions if you want, or we can, you know, receive, you can provide written comments that we can compile and provide into a second draft.
Thank you very much for the information, there's a lot of it, but again, extremely important. We don't have to take an action tonight, there will be more discussion, there will be more refinement, but in the meantime, I'd like to ask if any council members have any particular comments or questions, we'll start Mr. Matthews in.
Not at this time, it's a good presentation, I still want to review it and I've printed it all out and making my notes, so still a work in progress with me.
Got you. Mr. Singleton?
Yes, just a couple items, I called and talked with Ms. Jones last week, I was concerned about the length. I mean, this is over and over and over in here, it tells us to be kind and respectful with each other and also with staff, and, you know, I won't say it's overkill, but it's like in every section, and I understand that, but, I mean, I don't see what wants, that we know that. Something specifically that concerns me, and I spoke with her about, was some of our two-on-meetings that we're having with development partners, and how we're on a very thin line between, and she told me this, between breaking the law and being within the law. And I appreciate everything that's stated here about being open, because they are not open, they're not open to the public. It says, we're inappropriate overtly or implicitly promised council action, and those, that's what they're looking for, they're looking for hints on projects, and I told her I'll no longer do those, I'm not going to participate, and they should be banned from us, because that's not good business, because we're being asked, well, how do you feel about this? Enclosed, behind closed doors, and the public's not hearing it, but we're not meeting with citizens, it's stuff that the public hear and hear. So I appreciate all that being in here, because in my opinion, in my way of evaluating this, it clearly states, we should not do that. Council members should consult with the town attorney regarding matters appropriate for closed sessions and notice required disclosure of ex parte communications. I ain't heard anybody disclose any ex parte communications, that's exactly what we're doing. So I wouldn't longer participate in anything that comes before, since I have participated, and I will clearly state to the public what has taken place and what I said and did, and because I think we're not disclosing the ex parte communications, and that's ex parte communications. So we're on a very thin line, and I don't think most people in here, we had a roomful of citizens, you told me, we met with the developers two at a time, they would not like that, because we're not meeting with the residents, we're not going to meet with them two at a time, which is not going over to a neighborhood group, rarely ever a meeting. They have neighborhood meetings, but when we go to a neighborhood meeting, and most of the time, as the attorney advises us not to go, because we're going to be, might be asked a question or say something that we probably shouldn't say, we should just sit there and be quiet, not say a thing. And so, I mean, if we have to go there and sit there and be quiet and say nothing, then if we're meeting with a developer in a two-on-meeting, we should sit there and be quiet and say nothing. Gray's opinion, and again, I will not participate in any more of those meetings, that's not good business. So I appreciate all this information here, appreciate what you talked to me about last week, because it really is a, we're on a slippery slope, and somebody's going to get caught, and we're going to look really bad.
And if I can just clarify, so there are competing values here, you know, one is that everything be done in open and transparent matter, and that's certainly the Open Meetings Act, but even the Open Meetings Act provides some exceptions to that, including closed sessions. The other exception is when there's not a quorum present. So it's legal to have those meetings, but it might not be in appearance of open and transparent business. And then, again, the prohibition is, is not that you can't have ex parte communications, but it is that you must disclose those and make that avail, that information available to anyone who's interested, usually that's the public or opponents to a project, but it could be another developer who wants to hear, what did you tell that developer, they might be interested in those comments as well. So there are competing values here, and, and it is for council to determine how you want to balance those competing values. It is not unusual for lots of other jurisdictions to have these kind of two, or what you would say, subquorum meetings, and that's a way of educating yourselves on matters before, you know, actually dealing with it in a public setting. So it's, it's not unusual, but I agree that it's not in the spirit of the open meetings law to conduct business, you know, to conduct business in private room. And again, with respect to the public, certainly the public could ask for meetings, but they don't tend to be organized in a way to do that. But I, I believe that there are times when homeowners associations and other, other civic groups, they'll ask for staff or a council member to come meet with them and talk about that, but it is unusual for the entire council to, to go and attend a meeting in that kind of public setting.
But we're being asked in those meetings, what do you think? What do you think the public, especially before a public hearing, we had one just last week, but there's been no public hearing, and so you're asked to steer them in a certain way that they think will pass, and that is unethical, period.
And the only thing I'll also add to that is, though, under your U D O, you are requiring the developers to meet with the neighbors on, on more than one occasion. So when you talk about the triangle between council, the public, and staff, some of those interaction, you know, they're having the developer also deal with the neighborhood without council present, although you can be present at those, but to get their feedback as well.
Right, but they wouldn't meet with the council in the, in the neighborhood meeting with two council members, list a quorum, developers wouldn't want to do that, because they would ask us things, and the public would not like that. Anyway, I appreciate this information in here, and again, I will say it's rather lengthy, but anyway, y'all have done a lot of work, and you talked, told me about all the resources you've had, I saw at least 10 different resources there, you used plus the town's 2010 documents, so y'all have done, taken a lot of time to do this, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, good observations, good responses. Ms. Behringer, comments, questions?
Yeah, a couple. With regard to meeting with developers, two-on-one, whatever that is, you know, we are, I can understand Mr. Singleton's point, but we also are free to say to the developer, when he says, what do you think, we can say that it would not be appropriate to express an opinion in a meeting that's not open to the public. We have, we're free to do that. I, I appreciate the work that you've done here, in our increasingly casual society, we need to be remembered many, many times what civility is and how, what's expected. Nobody wants to be mistreated or disrespected, but those same people oftentimes will mistreat or disrespect others. I'm reminded of a quote from Maya Angelou, she says, you won't remember what people said, you won't remember what they did, but you'll remember how they made you feel. And that's very, very true, and none of us have the right to project onto somebody else how they should feel. So we should treat everybody with respect and dignity.
Thank you, good observation. Mr. Dallinger?
Just a couple of quick comments. One, I think the length is, is long, and I think there's a lot of overlap with the council procedures, so I think finding a way to tease some of that away, maybe come up with a two-page or three-page ethics document, and then a procedures document that includes that, how we interact with the public in the public space, because a lot of that's in there already, and then maybe having that as part of what gets adopted after every election, like those procedures would be helpful. Reflecting back on our civility training last week and the discussion around dialogue versus debate, and we have applicants come before us that are using a different set of rules on their ethics, because they're here to debate us, they're here to zealously represent their position, and in that training, it talks about how there are tactics of hiding information, not being forthcoming, and, and so we're kind of, not that we need to do what they're doing, but we're sometimes with one hand tied behind our back and trying to engage with them to get the information out of them. And there are some things I won't tolerate on as personal, being intentionally deceived and lied to, so there may need to be an ethics and code of conduct for applicants, so that they understand that they're, if you want to be a partner and meet us at this community level of disclosure and cooperation, that you, they're, we have high standards. Because, you know, even the wording that's in this, the recourse for someone lying to the body of council, which means lying to the public, we're kind of limited in how we can engage that, and even talking about their meeting with the public, there have been times too where they're, they've misrepresented to us what the content of that public meeting, that neighborhood meeting was, and the neighbors have to say, well, that's not what happened. So we've got to be met with the same level of respect that we're giving, and we need to find a way to nail that down. There have been instances also bullying by applicants or planning commission, so we've got to do on that. We've got to, respect is mutual.
That's right.
So we've got to make that expectation very clear, when they walk in the door, how we expect them to conduct business in the town. As for the, the meetings, the two-on-two, I guess, you know, as far as ethics, I'm, I'm willing to go out and talk with the public about things, I feel like I should give that, anyone else that same luxury. At the same time, not being on the same page with regards to ethics, and having a debate mentality versus a dialogue mentality, trying to get their way, an outcome versus a collaborative approach, I think it becomes problematic, to Mr. Singleton's point around giving them sort of a roadmap, not to the best product, but to make it look as favorable as possible. So I'm, I'm a little conflicted on, on those. I think it's long too late, I think you would Matt's point on getting the information to us to make a decision on the fiscal side, that needs to help. We need to shape stuff that when people are coming in the door, it's not a tool for us, it's also a tool for staff, right? So that they're coming in with these sort of expectations on fiscal responsibility and all these things. And I think the same is true when it comes to, there's a balance between being informed early and kind of letting the process play out. So yeah, I'm a little, I'm a little conflicted on the two, on, on ones, you can only, it's only successfully done if you've got goodwill at the table on the other side. I think that's really what it comes down to, there has to be mutual respect and goodwill on the part of the other party to come up with the best outcome, so. As far as how that fits into this ethics conversation, code of conduct, I'm not sure. I'll probably think about it and type it up in my, my notes and thoughts, so that's all of that this time.
Well, thank you for the information, good briefing, points taken, and I will provide my comments to you on what I have on this particular document.
Excellent, good comments, great work so far, there's always more to it to meet the eye. Every answer raises another question sometimes in this life, and we don't want to just appear to be impartial and go by the rules, we actually do want to be open and communicative with every, every segment of our audience, which are our citizens, our businesses, business owners, developers, our colleagues in county government, state government, other municipal governments, we have, we have a lot of people that we need to work with. And I, I think I've seen my job from the beginning, it's helped to facilitate open, honest, clear communication. I'll go on record, say I'll meet with any citizen at any time, I don't want 50 of them with pitchforks and torches in my office, but three or four of them, hey, let's sit down and talk HOA, or just concerned citizens, same way with concerned business partners, business owners, and our developers, we, we have to have communication. But we'll be counting on you, Ms. Jones, to make sure we are absolutely within the bounds of legality and ethical and fair and balanced conduct with everyone. It is a balance, it is a fine line, and we want to be absolutely beyond reproach, beyond suspicion in every possible way. So thank you for all you're doing, thanks for taking the time to do this. If we need to add three pages instead of shrink three pages, let's do what it takes to all be on the same page, understand what our charge is, what behavior is expected of all of us as we're working through this. So thank you very much. So we'll, we'll keep going. Your, your closing remarks or?
Yeah, so I, I did want to recognize that Ms. Gibbs is on the line, and hopefully I covered everything that we discussed, but I appreciate her, her help with that, and she'll continue to help. help with this process. She also comes in with fresh eyes looking at council from a new, you know, a new employee perspective. But just to wrap up, the 2010 resolution is in effect. It meets the state requirement for having an ethics policy or resolution. You could leave it at that, or you can provide comments, which will compile and, you know, update this. Certainly this draft can be, you know, distilled down to the important concepts if that's what you choose. But this is your document. This is your code of conduct and ethics as a body. So I encourage you to think about how you want to manage these interactions, you know, amongst yourself, with the public, with staff, with other governmental bodies. And then when you feel that it's ready, or, you know, I've heard from all of you, we'll present another draft to you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Should we ask for a target date for that to happen or leave it open?
It's 11 pages. I, you know, it's a lot, it's a lot to go through, so I would encourage you to, you know, take your time with it. It's not something to rush into.
About mid-August or end of August? Something like that?
Well, I, yeah, I would say if you could give comment, feedback back to us within a month, then we could get something on your, one of your August agendas to reconsider this.
Yes, that's a good point. We should get our comments and observations in and then have a revised draft submitted to the council again, with plenty of time for one-on-one discussions with you, town manager, whatever. So certainly by the end of July, all of us should have our final comments in to you. Would that be reasonable?
That sounds good to me. I just know that my experience is that so often when you leave something open-ended, it sort of gets lost. And we don't want that to happen.
Yes, this is too important, too important. Thank you. That's a good goal to have. We certainly will be talking about this again. Look forward to you coming back to us individually to work through this. And then again, before the council, certainly shortly after the end of July with the next round. Thank you. Okay, and move right along to item number five. And I believe, Ms. Jones, you're up again, the White Oak Roundabout Acquisition Report. While you're there, why don't you tell us about the roundabout?
Okay. I've had a lot to do tonight, more so than normally in meetings, but thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So the White Oak Roundabout, you may recall that at your meeting last week, you approved the construction contract for this. I know this is a project a long time in the making. It predates when I came to serve the town. But, so I started with the acquisition process to get the appropriate right-of-way that was needed, permanent and temporary drainage, construction, utility easements. I began in January 2021 and reached out to impacted property owners in May of 2021. By, by September of 2022, with the assistance of outside counsel, we had completed the acquisition process. And because this was a state-funded project, we had what was called a quick take, which meant as if we weren't able to come to, you know, a voluntary negotiated price for the right-of-way and easements, we had to file eminent domain or condemnation cases. And then once we filed them and deposited the, what we estimated to be the just compensation, we actually took title to that, to those property interests. However, it then took another year and a half to actually resolve all of those condemnation cases. I'm happy to report that we got to settlements with all of the property owners. We did not go to trial. We had one property that we did go to mediation on. So in this memo, you also have a summary of all of the compensation that was provided. And some of the parcels had very minor impacts, temporary construction easements, and then, as you can see, some of them had much larger impacts, and that is why the compensation amounts differ. And as you look at the list, while there were 20, I know it says 26 parcels, but that was because at the 65% plans, the engineer, the consulting engineers anticipated that 26 different parcels would be impacted. Some of those impacts, as they got to the 90% and 100% plans, we realized we, you know, we could do the work within the existing right-of-way so that, while you see it goes to parcel 26, there really were 20 parcels that were impacted, but ranging, you know, from less than $1,000 to parcel nine with a total of 322,000. We ended up acquiring the entire parcel. This is the parcel, the triangle that goes mostly into the, the roundabout was the most impacted and would have had less than a half an acre of residual property left after the taking was done. So probably the best, the numbers you are looking at, I've broken it down. So the acquisition cost, this is the price, the checks that were cut to each of the property owners, and then including also the court filing fees, came to a total of just over There were recording fees of almost $2,000 and then appraisal costs. And one of, including in that was when we went to mediation, making sure that our outside counsel was prepared to discuss the appraisal because we did not receive a counterproposal, a counter-appraisal from that particular property owner. So there were costs associated with that. And then we had legal fees, and the legal fees totaled up to about $225,000. So your total cost of acquisition is just over $650,000. I don't know whether that's sticker shock for you, but I will say that I am proud to report that for the compensation amounts, we did stay within the budgeted amount and the approved amount by, that council gave us. So that cost was $444,000. You had authorized $530,700 for that part of it. However, attorney fees, because that's hard to predict, were not in that amount. And again, they came out to be, I just want to minus out that 17,000. Those title searches and mediation fees would have had been paid regardless of whether we had used outside counsel. So the legal fees were about two, you know, 200,000 plus their expenses. So this is the report out that needs to be done after acquisition of this nature is made and because this was a result of settlements that were made resolving some litigation and then also the negotiations that occurred for the voluntary conveyances of easements and right-of-way. So happy to answer any questions you have about that. In my summary, I did include that as we go forward, we have retained some property acquisition firms. They should be able to do some of the work that the attorney, the outside counsel did for, in a more cost-effective manner. And then also with increasing the capacity of the legal department, we can do more of the title searching and some of the outreach to property owners on future projects. So we hope to be able to manage those fees, but, and then just be using outside counsel when we're going to actual condemnation, eminent domain cases.
Comments, questions from our council members?
I would just say that it's, from my experience, it's a difficult process and the cost, to be honest with you, from my experience, it's difficult to know how the outcome is going to be with the cost of property and with the right-of-way acquisitions. And to keep it under budget, I would say, under the amount is, is good. It's good. It really is. So that's all I have to say, say to that point. And the lessons learned, I heard them, and how you're going to go forward with future acquisitions, I think that they're the right direction to go.
Thank you. Somebody who's been doing that a long time.
Yes, sir.
Is what. Other observations, questions?
I believe when we started this, which was pre-COVID, a long time ago, our original cost, I think, or participation in the whole project was somewhere in that neighborhood, about the entire project being done. Well, it wasn't, we were less than $1 million. It was six or seven, eight hundred thousand dollars. I know substantially more now and the cost of, all this stuff is, you know, those numbers, what was projected, you know, that was later in the process. But I believe when it first started, you know, it was in that neighborhood. But anyway, whatever, they're out there working now, so it's the project starting finally. And maybe after, what, about seven years, it might, it's supposed to take a year to complete it, isn't that correct, around about 12 months?
Yes, yes. So they'll be mobilizing shortly and then, yes, they anticipate a full year.
Yeah, so it'll be about a six to seven-year project, roughly. Okay, well, good. Appreciate the work and appreciate the detailed information.
Anything else on that topic?
I don't have anything else on that topic. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And with that, we'll move along to manager reports. Ms. Miller.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just to review the July 2024 meeting with, meetings with council. First reminder during July, council's been so gracious to allow us to only have one regular meeting and one work session, so just wanted to bring that to your attention. So our only regular meeting in July is scheduled for July 16th. Right now, looking at that July 16th agenda, we've got a few items on the consent agenda that we'll ask council to take action on. I want to bring your attention to the ordinance adopting the supplemental seasonal classification and pay plan. As you recall, part of the FY '25 budget is an increase in our supplemental hourly rates, and we need to go ahead and adopt those and put those in the pay plan. So you'll be asked to take action on that. Under public hearings, we have several public hearings that will be scheduled for the July 16th meeting, the first, City of Raleigh Annexation Line Agreement Renewal and Amendment, the Spring Drive Town Homes, the Cambria Development, as well as the Homestead at Brian Farms, and that's a continued public hearing. Under Old New Business, we also have the Garner Forward Implementation that we'll be bringing before council for further discussion and action. Looking ahead to the July 30th work session, we've got several discussions and reports ahead of us. We will have our next economic development quarterly update, as we shared with council a few months ago, the economic development quarterly update, something that will be starting in conjunction with the financial quarterly updates that we provide to council as well as the capital projects update as a way to make sure we're keeping council informed on everything that we're working on in economic development. Also back before council for further discussion and consideration is development agreement with L M G. If you recall, we had a lengthy discussion with them as part of our budget work session on what they're proposing for, for the new development downtown next to the recreation center. So there'll be further discussion on that as well. Excited to be able to bring forth to council and share with you the results of our community survey. We've heard us talk about that. Over the last few months, we've conducted the survey over the springtime. Staff is now looking through and finalizing the draft report, and so we'll be able to share that with the council in July. Looking forward to being able to do that. And then the final reporter discussion for the July work session is the pedestrian plan, specifically recommendation for which board committee should provide oversight to this. And if you recall, when council adopted this plan, the next step was then, who's going to be the one who's really going to oversee this and make sure that we're meeting our goals and priorities as identified in the pedestrian plan. So those are all the items we have identified for the July meetings. Are there any, any questions regarding July meetings?
Not hearing any questions, but.
Yes.
Couple of, the Cambria project and the Spring Road, Spring Drive Town Homes, have both projects that were both approved. Are they coming back for more specific site, site plan, specific vote or, you know, something? What has changed with the projects?
So Mr. Trezenberg, are you available? For us, Mr. Trezenberg, our planning director, to come and give a little bit more detail on those public hearings.
Those public hearings are just for annexation at this point.
Okay.
So there's nothing more that's site-specific.
Okay, thank you. I know it said at the beginning there would be some annexations, and then it broke both those down, so that's what was in the annexations. Thank you. Appreciate it. Sorry to bother you. You could have yelled that one from the back.
We want to make Jeff feel needed. Needed. We had a question. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
All right. Next item under manager reports is, staff has been listening to some of the comments and questions and feedback from council regarding wanting to better understand development opportunities and development projects earlier in the process in terms of not only what the projects are about, but how they fit into the overall context of the area of town they're being proposed for. So one of the great tools that the planning department has established is our Planning Development Map that is online, that gives you a clear understanding of the projects, what, where they are in the process, what some of the projects include as far as number of units and those kinds of things. But we're looking to add a new layer or new information to, in that, earlier in the process to make sure that the public and council are informed. So I'm going to ask our assistant manager, Mr. Hodges, if he will sort of walk us through this new element that we'll be adding to the development online map, as well as talk through moving forward, the development update that we plan to provide to council monthly.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Miller. Council may recall that as we continue these discussions, as manager Miller noted, one of the things that we have started doing is providing the notifications for neighborhood meetings to council. And as you may recall, the process now has a neighborhood meeting much earlier in the process that is one of two required meetings. So I think council is now getting somewhat accustomed to receiving these notifications, both in the mail and when we, when we can, forwarding an email to you about the notification. So we're hoping that you're getting those in two ways. And again, we know it's a little bit of a change because you're getting them for this first neighborhood meeting, which is very early in the process. So we thought an additional way to be able to visualize these projects, as Ms. Miller said, in context, was to add another category to our development map, which are projects that are in review. And so Jeff is going to, in a moment, after he gets the development site up, give you a little preview of this. And our thought, after some discussions with the mayor over the last couple of months, is that by adding this at the time that a developer requests the address labels or the addresses to mail the neighborhood letters, then it should appear on the map within close proximity to you and the public receiving notification for those meetings. So our hope is by the time you and others are notified of the neighborhood meeting, it's showing up for the general public to be aware of. When we, when we do that, there sometimes may be less information about a project because you may not see complete site plans. In the case of some of our tier-one rezonings that we're seeing a little more frequently, you may see nothing attached to the site plan because there's simply not enough information to represent in a graphical format when we first add it. So we're adding it earlier to try to make it available to council in context, but also to the general public. Our thought is that each month, as a part of the work session, as we did tonight, we will briefly bring up the map and point out any projects that were added that since the last time we gave you an update. And so whether council members choose to have one-on-one or discussions, organized discussions, as we're discussed previously with developers, whether or not you choose to do those, our hope is that by pointing them out as early as possible in the process, you can then choose to become more informed about them, whether it's by discussions with the developer, discussions with staff, or as you see fit. So Jeff's going to show you a demonstration of the map tonight, just how we're adding those, what you can expect, and then if council is agreeable to it, we'll add this as a monthly update on our work session agenda. Jeff?
So formally, good evening, mayor and council members. Just for the benefit of everybody, I just wanted to go start from the homepage. Just for the benefit of everybody, I just wanted to go start from the homepage. If you go under departments and planning, to click on the development activity link, that will take you to the page with both the pipeline data as well as the mapping application. You click on that link and it will open. Users will be asked to acknowledge the disclaimer about things like accuracy of the data, et cetera, et cetera. And then it will take you to, to the mapping interface. So what you'll see here is that our GIS analyst, Mr. Alex Bum, he has added a, a level of progress to the development project interface. So we have now this applications in progress. So that means that somebody has actually started the application process, but the application is not, that process is not yet complete. So they may have scheduled their pre-application meeting, but they may not have actually developed any formal materials. They may not have finished their TIA. They may not have yet had their first neighborhood meeting because all of those things are required to, before an application is even considered complete. So the easiest thing to do is just to be, look out for this purple color, and I'll just walk you through. We do have a few things that are in that status right now. And it can be from very small projects to very large. So for instance, we have here a, we had a pre-application meeting with a local gentleman, small business owner who's looking at a site here on Fayetteville Road to potentially expand some small industrial space for his particular business. So that is located here. And in the event that we actually do have some kind of drawing, we will attach that. In this case, it was just a, a drawing of the, just a rough schematic of the building that he would like to put on the property. But that one does involve a rezoning. That is something that you won't be able to see yet at this point. You'll see that the case number assigned to it is, is just a pre-application case number. This one happens to need both a rezoning and an annexation. But those are things that we talk to the applicant throughout this process to get them kind of honed in on exactly what the next steps would be. Another example of a smaller request that's in, there's someone who's looking at some, a couple of vacant parcels on Longdale Street. So again, this one would potentially involve a rezoning. There's no drawing, though, at this point, because it would just end up being probably two parcels into three parcels. But again, because it involves a rezoning, it's something that will come before you. Then we have, and of course, they're not always all rezonings. Some of them will be special use permits. So I'm sure that some of you are probably aware that North Garner Middle School is getting a complete overhaul. And so they have, Wake County Public School System has had a pre-application meeting with us regarding this project. Again, this one will be a special use permit. So I'm sure that you'll be receiving correspondence from the town attorney regarding attendance at those particular meetings, but you will see cases like that as well. In this one, I'll just go ahead and pop this one open real quick. They did have a sketch map of what the resulting project could potentially look like. But again, just remember, this is their initial first drawing without any kind of input from staff or anyone, apart from their, their consulting team reading the UDO and maybe having a couple of random questions answered by staff along the way.
So with ran, I know this is random, but with what they're doing, we're talking multiple-story buildings.
Yes.
As in more than two, as in like, more like the high school. Because they're, because they didn't, I mean, because you can redo the gym, that's one whole thing. But you're talking about multiple stories there.
Yes, as far, as far as I recall, they didn't, I don't think they had a, any kind of elevations to show us yet at this point, but that was implied in the conversation.
That's quite different than it exists today, that is for sure.
Yes.
And this is for someone who lived beside the school. The house is on here for 12 years, so, yeah, that's a, that's a different look.
So definitely encourage you to explore more at your leisure.
I'm looking at it right here. I pulled it up before you got to it, so.
And then just to kind of complete the tour, some of you are familiar with an assemblage that's being explored out here on Rock Quarry Road. So as Mr. Hodges mentioned, you know, this is a, potentially a tier-one application. There's really nothing yet that they've produced as far as any kind of exhibits to attach to this, but they're still working on their conditions and kind of refining their area map. I would suspect that at some point, we will be able to attach something along the lines of what you saw here for 3412 Benson Road, which unfortunately is, did not get attached when it was, the status was changed. But you'll remember that they had an area map in orange and green that kind of identified their developable areas and areas that were in wetlands and conservation. So again, as that kind of data becomes available, Alex will add that in. And then once the application is complete, he'll turn it color from purple to actually blue. So that is to recognize that it's actually in review. So the other two projects that we have in this purple category right now, there is a proposal that's being worked on for residential here on the corner of Clifford and New Bethel Church. So the area that's still between Harper's Landing and the Clifford Grove subdivisions. And another one that you've probably been hearing a little bit about then, of course, we've got these two projects here, but then also the Stansel Farm assemblage for a residential proposal there. So again, all of these are in various, various stages of completing their application. The trick, the key is, is that Alex is our point person for this map. He's also the point person for getting the neighborhood mailing list to the applicants. So in the absence of any kind of automated system between our permit portal and this kind of interface, he is kind of the best answer to, to getting this data updated from one system to the other. So when he gets a request for that neighborhood mailing list, he will go ahead then and add what information we do have to the development map so that folks can be aware that by the time they get their letter and notification of that neighborhood meeting, it should be already on the map. And as always, you've seen, I think, over the last several months, that this is a, an evolving tool. If you have ideas or, you know, recommendations of how we can make it better, we are certainly open to hearing what you have to say and your ideas. We fully expect it to continue to evolve and hopefully become a tool that folks find easy to use and get some, at least basic information about the projects that are being proposed.
Excellent. I think you've heard the counsel clearly when they said they want to know early about what's going on so they can have some input and get some feedback, whether it's through meetings with developers or through staff or whatever way it works. But to have communication, work toward the same goal, let them know early what our expectations are. So thank you very much for what you're doing. These are steps in the right direction. Any other observations or comments?
Two, on-topic, off-topic questions. What's going to happen to that intersection of Garner Road and Rock Quarry Road? Are there plans right now for that intersection? Because right now, it's just a stop sign. It's a weird angle, too.
Yes, somebody, one, one of the developments is on the hook for at least installing signals. And I'm not sure if there's, there's probably a little bit of realignment happening with that. I would need to check with engineering on that. But we have been reviewing some plaques here recently for extra right-of-way.
And then the Stansel Farm one, how do those people get to 540?
They get to, they will get to 5... As of right now, the way the development has happened under the county's watch, there is very little east-west connectivity, if any, between Jordan Road and Highway 50 from 1010, and I think you may go all the way down to 42 or 210 before there's another east-west crossing. So these folks would come up Jordan Road to 1010 and then back onto 50 at this point.
Okay, any other questions, observations from counsel? Again, this is just a sneak preview. Many details to be evolved. This is just a picture of what's going on. Feel free to contact Jeff and his staff at any time for more information. John stays on top of this, a good one to coordinate. But we just, this is an early warning flag, not a submittal, just letting people know what's going on.
So Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I think it's important, we want to provide this as additional information, but we'll also ask counsel's help if you get questions from constituents because people are now going to see things on the map that have less detail than they may have been accustomed to seeing. So that's going to be an educational opportunity for all of us, and we'd ask you to participate in that educational opportunity along with us. And we'll try to think about some ways that we can provide additional information and education on the map. But we just recognize that in, in the attempt to provide additional information earlier, there could be points of confusion that it could cause for some of the users of our map. So we just want to be mindful of that and, and all be working together to try to overcome or avoid any of those type things.
Yeah, no, I think this is real good. Just going to an ETJ meeting last week that had to do with the area between Jordan Road and the other side of 540, and they were talking about Stansel Farm, and I said, what? And now I see it here, purple, it's graphically illustrated. So somebody's always ahead. So the more information we can get, we can't remember it all, but at least we know where to go look and see where it is.
Very good. And I want, want to thank Jeff and Alex for working on this as well and being able to provide this for you to preview tonight. They actually were able to preview this a little earlier than, than we'd originally planned so that you had this to do. And as we mentioned, we'll be reviewing new additions to the map at each of the work sessions.
Excellent, thank you. And I think we're still technically in the manager reports department.
Yes, we are. Just two more updates and reminders for counsel. July 3rd celebration is quickly upon us, and so just wanted to remind counsel and the community about what a great celebration that is, fireworks, the North Carolina Symphony. Once again, we'll host the celebration at Lake Benson Park. Gates open at 5:00. I'll share some information with counsel about where we need you to be and at what time to kick off the celebration, but very excited about that. Now we're just keeping our fingers crossed for good weather on July 3rd. And the final update and reminder is that just wanted to make counsel aware, as well as the community, the reminder that the James R. Stevens Award nominations are being accepted. Information about the award and the nomination is on the town's website. Nominations are being accepted until July 15th. So certainly look at our website if there are questions or contact the town clerk's office for additional questions. And that's it this evening, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. And it says attorney reports. Is there anything left you need to tell us, Ms. Jones?
No, I think you all heard plenty from me this evening. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. And likewise, counsel reports. Any particular reports need to be made by council members? Start down this way. Ms. Behringer? Mr. Singleton?
I'll text, I mean, I'll email. Staff at North Garner Plan's got me thinking about four different things. I mean, all the parking's on one side of the building, but is the gym on that side or is the gym on the other side? There's no parking right beside it. I've just sitting here thinking, is all the parking on the other side? I mean, really?
Yeah, a lot, a lot going on.
There's someone who played in the first game in that gym a long time ago. The new gym. As you remember, the gym used to be the Avenue Street Gym, so they built that gym.
And now everything's reversed.
Yes, now all's...
Old timers, old timers. Yeah, old timers. Okay. And there's no closed session tonight, so it's time to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So what?
Mr.?
I didn't have anything.
Oh, yeah, he gave me a sign. He gave, he gave me a sign.
I'm looking out for you. I appreciate it.
There was a motion made by Mr. Vance and seconded by Ms. Behringer to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, that's unanimous. And our work session stands adjourned. Thanks for all who came and all who watched from home.
Thank goodness.